I'd like to call this being in order. Please rise from the pledge of allegiance for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its
We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Chairman Bonnick.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sotis little is absent with prior notice. Commissioner Algaia.
Present.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
Thank you. Can I bring us to public comment? Seeing no public here, we'll move on to our action items. And the first is review of the 2022 budget.
I'll just start off and turn over to Jen and Michelle and Darcy. So glad we were find some dates. You are all very busy people. Thank you for sending me all your dates. So glad we found this date and then July 12th and then at the end of the year we'll try to find another, I mean August 12th or next month. We'll do, but I thought we'd do today is go over the books, kind of have a general overview. I do have a memo I'll pass out shortly that has all the non-traditional requests for this year, probably for next year, as we've normally done, and then in the past what we've done, either to invite people to our future meetings to come and present, so hopefully today we'll decide who we want to be on our next meeting on August 12th. And once again, just want to thank the clerks office and treasurer's office for all their efforts. You know, putting a book together like this is a lot of work. They literally did this yesterday. That's, we're still changing numbers. We had, was it Monday, Thursday? Yeah. To revise some numbers, so it was a constant evolution and try to be as current as we can with the number of requests and everything. So thank you for your work. Their delivery in the law library yesterday afternoon, putting these books together. So it's a big effort, so thank you everyone. So Jen or Darcy or Michelle, you want to start?
I have to, I'm going to step out a bit here. I've got a little court hearing. So we see that the Core Farm Barns are cover page this year. That's kind of a cool, cool one to have for 2022.
Barn of the year.
Yep. And some of you, all of your books are labeled, so you'll know if they're yours by your back thing. Some of you got more personalized back pages. It just depended what we could find out there on social media. Okay, so in the beginning of the book, we've got our normal table of contents. The first two pages are just what's going to be in the general fund. And then the third page of that goes back to the special funds. So, and then supplemental information will be in the way back. So we've got our general information tab, and what that is, is it's your draft of your 2022 General Appropriations Act review, which won't be approved until October or whenever you have got the budget. And Laurel is nice enough, she highlights several areas, you know, where there'll be changes in that. And that's pretty standard from year to year. Then behind that is the general fund recap summary, just where it stands today because there are items that have been requested, but like Chet said, we go to him and if it's something out of the ordinary that wasn't in the prior budget, it's not in here. This does come to you balanced as presented, but it doesn't mean it's not going to change. We're pulling a little over a million from fund balance forward in order to balance it. So that's just a recap of the general fund revenue. Then we have our recap of the general fund expenditures, which are not only some of the departments, it's also transfers in and outs of corporations to other agencies. Then of course, it will correspond with your table of contents. We have our legislative, public safety, justice, public records, where all the departments are. We have our internal service funds. And then we go to our special, special funds, which may be like senior services, inmate housing, recycling, 911 training fund, dispatch services, revenue sharing, veterans. There's a whole list of them that you'll see from your table of contents that we'll get to. Then we have all the staffing levels for all the departments. Remember, all of your union contracts are expiring this year except for one, so there are no pay adjustments in here except for the road patrol based on what that union contract, because they entered into a three-year contract. Everyone else was two. So that's the only place where there's pay adjustments other than, did we do steps? Yeah, already did do steps, people that are still climbing the current pay scale, but we anticipate those will probably be adjusted. Then in the back, you have supplemental information that was submitted. It certainly isn't required, but if you have a special request, you know, they put that in there. There are some new reports in here that Jen can review with you due to GASP, they have to be included in here. And so there are some new reports. But that's just what is in the book. I did talk to Chet and Jen a little bit. I think because we've got a couple new commissioners and maybe just as a good refresher, I think it would be helpful at maybe one of our next meetings, if you were interested, to know again where this money flows from general fund to fund, from funds to the general fund, how hospitalization is funded, as well as that inner relationship of that funds being transferred between specific funds. You know, it's really good that you see how this, this is running because as we get more into it for our, especially for our new commissioners, our current taxes, and we tell you this every year, our current taxes, best guess that, that the treasurer's office can come to, does not cover our operating expenditures. It will not balance our budget. I mean, at 10-1 in our, our budget is proposed for the general fund at, let's say that page, 14-5. So we do rely on grants, services we perform and other things. So I think it's important, we kind of just give you an overview and we'll put that into a sheet. We did not do it today because when we met the other day, we really didn't talk about that internally. I think it's beneficial.
Revenue, I'm sure you probably would have mentioned this before, but we always estimate very conservatively with this revenue coming in, at least inside the year.
Yes.
The revenue has always exceeded the amount that we estimate. And that's a good thing because you don't want to be the other way where you estimate too high and find out you have to cut back. So every year, the treasurer's office, revenue estimation is extremely conservative, which we know and we all agree that's the proper way to do it because it's always easier to adjust out than to try to make cuts and adjust out. But we're confident that the revenue actually will be higher than, than anticipated in the book.
And, and when, when you take this home and you're looking at it, especially for the two new commissioners, if you see some budgets that are maybe at 75% or 100%, it might just be that all of our money goes to them in the first portion of the year. It doesn't mean that they're going to overspend. It's just how it's, how it's spent. And I also think somewhere in our, one of our meetings, I think it might be good to explain some terminology that we use because I'm thinking that it's not clearly understood, some of the verbiage in the line items that are used here. I don't think there's a clear understanding just of the simple term overtime. People hear that and they think people are getting paid time and a half and double time and a half. A lot of times it's used for a single rate of pay because we have so many variations of 21 a week, 21 hours per week employees. We have 35, we have 28, we have 40. We have union contracts that differentiate when someone can and cannot truly get truly paid overtime. So everything we're putting to those line items, we might have a 21-hour employee that works 35 one week. Well, there's 14 hours, but it's overtime, but it's straight pay overtime. So I think we need to get that word usage down so there's a clear understanding. Some departments have comp time, some, most of whom do not. So that, how that's all computed, I think plays into the picture of what's going on here, so.
Do you want to change the terminology on that?
We, we have talked about, we have talked about if we should, but you know, you've got straight overtime, you've got your time and a half overtime, you've got holiday pay overtime. So I don't know how much we want to keep breaking it down. I think it's just good to review that every once in a while because it's been a long, it's been a long time.
Yeah.
You know, and we do, I think we have some 37 and a half hour a week employees too. I forgot about them because that's a little odd at T, but we do have some that do 37 and a half.
I mean, I guess I was just thinking, you know, because it's a 35-hour week, anytime we get over 40 or something, it would just be straight time, but it's a separate category.
Well, even, even I know.
Calling overtime, call it straight time.
We, we could because even those that work a 35-hour work week, just because they might work 45 in a week, doesn't even guarantee that those extra five are a time and a half because it depends what union they're in, what office they're in, mainly union by, by position. Those five hours may still not be a time and a half because if they took any vacation or personal time, it doesn't count, it has to be physically worked here, at least at most of the offices in this building. So I just think it might be work and discussion so there's a clear understanding at some point, if you're interested.
I would come to a session like that.
I'm sorry?
I would come to a session like that.
We would just be part of your.
Well, we'll have a dialogue later on what topics you want to cover in future meetings.
That's all I have right now. That's a book. Thank you.
And just in explanation, the suggested 2022 budget, if you turn to the first page under revenue summary, if that's what your, the one that says department changes or requests, that's actually going to be the 2022 budget.
If you don't make a change, that is correct.
Right. And then, and the idea here is that the blank line, as if we want to change it, we will change the number on the blank line so, so that people understand that.
Right. Yes.
So if we'd like the top one, if it says 1,095,000, you know, 229, if we wanted to change it to a different number, if we decided that we want to make it less or more, even though it's probably exactly what it is.
Well, right now it is because this is presented to you as balance, but as you add things in or take them away, and it's also going to impact when we look, right now we've got contingency based on how much we should have in there. We've got contingency of 447. So it's really going to depend as you get more into the conversation because MERS is always a hot button topic if we want to put more money into our balance because we're, we're funded at the end of 2020 at 84%. I believe I just looked it up last night. And that's one of the discussions that you, Commissioner Rushton had mentioned, and I think that was on, when Chet and I talked maybe for the next agenda, to go over just some of that MERS because people wanted a little bit more explanation about our different groups and stuff like that.
And maybe help especially for Rec when, as we have these meetings and we make some decisions, then usually Jen and Seth go back and change the books and change numbers. So it's very common to have changes throughout the year, throughout the budget process. We try to wrap everything by mid-September because we have to have a public hearing and Michelle has to have the budget available for the public. And so our goal is to have it wrapped up by mid-September, have a public hearing the first Tuesday of October, but Michelle's a published man and has to have a budget available. Is the 10 days part of that?
I've got the dates knocked down, so I mean, they can still be working because we're pretty confident.
But just so you know, that's kind of a timeline that we're on. And we adjust them every time you make a decision. And since these are budget workshops, in the past, we always tried to find consensus about among commissioners what to put in the budget. We don't, most time, hold on things, will usually ask for comments and feedback and then whatever the majority of you think, we adjust. Then the final vote will be in October, and that's the only meeting where we meet the first Tuesday of the month and then the second Tuesday of the month. So that's a little different, but that's when you formally vote. But we can make changes all the way through that October meeting.
Well, and we do want to look at some of those funds and how they impact. I'm just, the one I think we talked about briefly on Monday, and I don't know if, if the administrator put it in his memo that just comes to my mind, was the tower because of that federal funding that came through and how we look at how we're funding that with in relationship to 911, if we don't need to hold back quite as much money as we have in the past. So that would be one area, you know, that we put, but Chet has a whole memo. I do have to excuse myself. I've got to check on this court hearing and I'll be back.
Well, and then most of the supplemental information are the changes that be made. Isn't that usually, you know, the case?
The supplemental, say that again?
The supplemental information, if those are the changes are being requested that are not in the budget?
In most cases, yes. So I don't know if Chet wants to pass out his paperwork now.
We'll, we'll.
It's probably, right, a couple that you get that ahead of time. This year, when I prepared the budget, I went through each narrative and did correspond back to what was in the expenses. If something was on the narrative and wasn't written on the line, I did either add or take out depending on the paperwork that Chet will give out. I also did a questions and comments. He changed it to questions and issues. It's things that I've seen going through this book, we talked about it on Monday with the treasurer's office, different revenues that we've seen or what you're going to do with these federal funds that could affect what goes in your general fund or and/or comes out of. So those are definitely, if Chet wants to pass those out, those are definitely the topics that I think that you're going to want to start with so that you know what's in your book before we go ahead and dive in.
I wouldn't hesitate.
I was just looking under the, under public safety in, in the sheriff's budget, and his gas and oil is only up $2,000. And at the pump, we're paying, what, a dollar more a gallon already, and it's expected to rise. And so it's up by 50, it's up by 50%. I think that's a budget we should keep, or a line item we should keep track of, not just in the sheriff, but we've got inspections and senior services, anybody else that we pay gas and oil. I think that, I'm going to be stunned if it, unless for some reason the wholesale rate will stay less from the road commission, but I can't expect it's going to.
And I, and help me out, Jen, the last couple of years, when prices were low, we were way under budget with those line items too, so it's.
And we did not change that to reflect that.
So that increase probably, I'm just guessing here.
Yep. Jim, Jim, put that increase in. That number is, is from the undersheriff on his gas.
So when it comes to presentation of the departments.
So we think we're already inflated enough to make up with just a $2,000.
I do. I mean, currently we're under.
I see you're right.
Through June, we were still under and prices got higher, steadily going higher. I think road commission, we can throw that, so it's, you know, your new rate is compared to pumps.
Right.
I think we'll be okay.
Okay. Yes, they're already at 21,000 in that, at the end of June.
Right. That's just happening through the year and I think the budget there is 50.
You had that 50 for this year.
Right. Now that's more than gas, that is oil changes and things too, so.
Now that's going to go up too.
Right.
But I do notice in 2018, audited amount for gas and oil for this, for your department was 54.4.
Yeah, it's $4 a gallon.
Yeah. Well, what are we looking at today?
Less than three because they don't pay the tax.
Right. I know currently we're 50s. I want to say we're paying like 2.7 a gallon. Four monthly.
I still want to see us having, well, we would probably go trend, right? So I want to see us scaling back road patrol too.
Right. And Jen, I don't think we would ever do that. Gas prices are hard to predict how much we're going to need per year because it is so, maybe, depending on, I'm all the way out from residence to, you know, what's going on in the world affects gas prices. Try to predict that for a whole year is serious.
Jim's on top of his budgets. I'm sure if he finds an issue in 2022 with his oil and gas, he'll be back before you to ask for more funds.
All right.
Is that correct?
Very safe to say.
Well said, Jen. Well said.
You're welcome. That being said, I know that Michelle commented on the GASP 84. That has been implemented a couple of years. The difference that you're going to see here is that in the special funds, there are three funds that you are not familiar with in your budget process. Those three funds are going to be inmate, which is 706, inmate trust, 721 library, and 701 trust and agency. Those pages that are budget, that, that are expenditures and/or revenues are actually liability to the county. So with GASP 84, each year I do an auditor's journal entry. It looks those caches, those cash items that are due to either other agencies, other entities, or employee benefits. They must be booked into the general fund. I make that entry every year with an auditor's journal entry. On the 31st, the auditors let me know what that amount's going to be as to what's already paid and what is still owed. And then on the first, I reverse that. So those are three. They are not going to have budgets, but they are in here because they have history. We have touched those on 1231 and touched them again on 11. So I just want to make you aware when you're going through and thinking, you know, I don't know what that is. Those are, so it's 701, 706, and 721, just to let you know.
701.
1, 706, and 721 will not have a budget. They are there for audited figures as well as the one before, but that has always carried, our 690. Our 690 special fund is our MM RMA. Each December 31st, I balance that. I produce a journal entry for the auditors so that we know what is in our self-insurance fund for our liability. It's what that balances. That must be booked for our audit as well is something that I do. That being said, do you want to pass out that paperwork?
Yeah, I've asked any questions so far. Any questions?
They may want to look at the list of what is in and what isn't in.
Let me pass this memo out because I know it's very difficult for you to go through page by page of this whole book and try to find out what's unique. So like in past years, we try to summarize it in a simple note form. And more details are in the book. This is just a quick overview, more of a guide for you to lead us in the discussion and what items you want to pick for our future meetings. In the past, we have normally started with personnel requests first and then work through the rest of the list. Okay, everyone head.
Did you, yeah, did you bring them for us?
Yeah, I thought there's extra.
I'll go first.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Why don't I drop one off with Patricia on my part?
Well, we have one for Patricia, we have a one for Patricia, two.
I can drop it off. I could buy her house.
Oh, okay. That'd be great.
I could take her book too.
Keep this or extra?
Yeah. I could also take her book to her.
Okay.
Literally go buy her.
I'm sure she would fish it in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We told her we'd call her after a meeting to give her. So like I said, this is a attempt to summarize the items that are either unique or requested upcoming or issues that we have further dialogue on for the next couple of months. So these are not in the order, the kind of as they came in. And thanks, Jen, for helping me with my notes here and everything, working on this. I think I captured everything here, but if not, pretty free to ask. First of all, as you know, the sheriff has requested vote and that's approximately 490,000. He did request also this to be considered part of the American really front budget. Inmate housing, this is something we've been working on, the sheriff and I, and Todd Rausch, and the tribe. We have a contract with the tribe where they guarantee us our revenue of 127,750, and we have reserved 10 beds for them. They have not used that amount. Also, what's interesting is that amount counts towards their 2% allocation, which I personally don't think is in our best interest, but that's the way the contract was written many years ago. The tribe is requesting a complete restructure of that contract, and we're still going back and forth. The sheriff did agree that it'd be legitimate to raise it from 10 to 7 guaranteed, however, that is a reduction of over $38,000. So the question, if there's agreement between the tribe and sheriff, any agreement would have to improve by the board commissioners because our contract with the tribe is with the board of commissioners and the tribe. So we'd have to go to the board. But if that is the recognition, it's improved, that would cause a shortfall of $38,000, $328 in this budget. And we're not sure when and if we'll have agreement. We've been dialoguing for five months. They submitted a revised proposal that we had some issues with, and about three weeks ago, we revised the proposal, sent our version of it from the sheriff, and we have not heard back on that. But just so you know, there's a potential error. If there is agreement and if the board does approve it, it is a reduction of 38,000, $325, which the sheriff and Todd said they need those funds, and so therefore there may be a request from the board. And I won't speak on his behalf because we don't have a contract yet, but that issue we may have to deal with this upcoming year. The 911 revenue, this is a result of the contract that you approved with Safety Net last month, so that's why there's actually a reduction because that's coming with our partnership and everything, so that truly is a reduction in their budgets.
Yeah. I, I placed this in here, it's basically a note, but when you see your narratives, I know a lot of you do go through and read that, Matt did put that max of 68. So I, after speaking with him, reduced it so that the general fund funds 911 as well as the tower, as well as E911. So if that 68 was there and not needed, the general fund would be putting that difference in when it's not necessary. So we did talk about it with that contract going through. I just wanted you to have a note that that actually is 27 is what he's, is what his dates is going to be.
Is, is part of that the contract with Mac, Max, the firm for consulting?
Radio North.
Power maintenance?
Jen?
Um.
Radio North, we pay that, that's.
So the Max Machuda, so you mean Radio North for support? Is that what you're thinking?
I'm wondering if we're reducing the contract with Radio North.
The, the Radio North one that I'm thinking you may be thinking of is for the, is out of the 457, which is our emergency radios?
Those are two separate issues. This is a contract with Safety Net.
I don't think Matt has a contract for the nine, his contractual for 911 is more about, I was just going to take a look to see if I could find it here. His is more in regards to operations of 911. So the Motorola, like for the CAD, that kind of under, under contractual is what I'm thinking.
So the answer is no, it's a separate.
I don't think so. I think it's separate.
Thank you.
But it does relate to tower issue. If we choose to go forward on the tower and if we use, if we choose to lose those federal funds for that, then we'll have an impact on our general budget because this money's set aside in the tower fund.
Yes.
So that money is not being used. I mean, it all is, are one big, big pot of separate items, so that's a discussion we could have down the road.
Yeah, I just found it. So basically, his, his contractual services under 911 are for lean and are for mobility smart 911. So of his 27,000, that's where that comes into. Since you did the virtual server and lean maintenance, that's what was reduced. And so he does have a Motorola Flex annual of 11,000, a core, very small ones, but it was the large one that just went through a safety net that would have pushed him up to the high, the high 70s. Yep.
The rest of your dates is requesting that the part-time position be restated as full-time. This was a decision of the board, I believe, two years ago, I believe, to reduce one staff person from full-time to part-time, and she's requesting it be restated for next year as a full-time position. Parts and wrecks, this is from a parts and wrecks commission. They are requesting contracted services for someone to coordinate their activities. As you know, this is kind of separate from what I proposed, but kind of same logic is that they have struggled with leadership and guidance and following policies and so forth. So their commission, and we have two members here that are on that commission committee to talk about more, have requested that we contract with an individual to help them with the parts at $25,000. Capital play, they have put in 45,000, and there's a list in the back of the books we can go over for their request for next year. If we go to next speech, April Messiah is asking the board to reconsider her salary structure as it's lower than most of us, most of the other department heads here in the county. She's asking for it to be reclassified and readjusted. The treasurer's office is asking for software for Hard National Human Resources at approximately $275,000.
Question, question on that. When we buy software, is, is, do we have a process? So does Ron weigh into that and other users are separate for just the treasurer's office?
Well, BSMA is, help me out, it is used by more than just the treasurer's office.
Correct. It's used by building safety, and then the treasurer's office, we use it for all the tax software plus the animal licensing.
It does usually go through our IT department and we sometimes go off for bids, sometimes we don't depending on what the situation is.
That has not done that yet.
No, no. No, no. That $275,000 is an estimate. Building safety, two of their vehicles are getting high in knowledge, and they are considering purchasing of two additional vehicles. And we have some different options there that we can talk about in terms of maybe some cars coming off from the jail, or I mean, the sheriff's office, too. But they will probably need two new cars this year. They are on the road, obviously, every day, five days a week. And a couple of their cars, they did purchase new several years ago. A couple of them are from the sheriff's department. They're still using those cars.
Is one unmarked?
Well, they're all in terms of, well, they have construction codes on them.
Because it looked like one of, I thought it was going to be one of our deputies was, I don't know where they came from, but over northwest were pulling out. And right behind him was another construction code. There was no sign on the back of the car, and I know it was an ex-deputy car.
I know because we have sold some of those cars, too, to the public, so.
I mean, yeah, what a coincidence.
Ours do have construction codes.
All of them are marked?
I think they are.
Yes, they are.
Okay, so it was just.
You have one that's not.
Did you have?
We have one that's assigned to jail. It's not having any mark.
Oh, okay.
Gotcha.
For transport purposes, you know, prisoners, that kind of thing.
That's probably.
We do have one that is unmarked.
That's what I saw then.
And I think the construction code is car. And the senior services, that one also, if they do have.
And there's our mark. Okay. That, I would say they should always be marked, but for that reason, I can see why you're not marking that one. Okay.
All right. All right. So there's options that we could talk about. And as you know, that's a separate budget, so that should be from their, their book. As a follow-up for our discussions last couple of months, and our committed whole recommendation, we need to have a discussion about creation of a human resources department and the creation of a finance department, as was discussed by the board. Joe Hub was asking once again, he came to board, as you remember, a couple of months ago here. And he will ask once again that assistant prosecutors have to be reclassified and adjusted. Capital building, I believe, these all came from Jerry, the first three anyway, right, Jen?
Yes, the first three.
Yeah. Some security camera coverage, well, the first one is, yeah. And some updates in tile area in next door. And then some new chairs, so.
For the LEC.
Yeah. So these are all capital building improvement projects here. Jen, you want to talk about the note transfer from either general fund or DTR?
Yeah. So the note there is for you to be aware that there is no transfer out from general fund or DTR to supplement that 470. In the past, the board has decided if the general fund or DTR will fund these purchases for improvements to build, to the building. The treasurer's budget from DTR was to, that budget was designated for that software. So I left that in the contingency line item so that the board could decide what they're going to do with those funds.
And then the clerk's office, software package for online services for $20,000. And then a request for additional staff, which is estimated to be $73,000. And then I just restated my memo from our committed whole meeting that talks about basically the same thing that the clerk's asked. That's a double, because you made a reputation, but I made it back in June, too. So it's the same thing. It's not two separate requests from clerk's office. So that's actually one request coming from two different people. And my thoughts about provide some coverage for the parts and recs. And well, I think the parts and recs, what I post, are trying to do the same thing. We just don't have any administrative leadership in that area, and we'd like to rectify that. And then kind of expansion of the human resources department duties. I guess more than a department because, you know, we don't have a human resources department. Most of it's gone through my office, but kind of an expansion of duties of clarification there. So that's part of my memo that's attached, the same one that you have seated in June. I didn't make any changes on that. IT, there's some requests here for some very tactical items. And we're not going to go over those until we get to that point.
Quick question on that, because we had talked a couple of months ago about Ron's eligibility for retirement and, and future plans. And we had talked about maybe doing something contracting out.
That's coming up next. That's, that's separate, okay? This is just the tactical requirements.
Okay, thank you.
So as you see, those are very specific items, too. Same thing with the duplicate fund. There's some needs for replacing equipment, as I understand. The sheriff's office is asking for three new vehicles, a motor pool fund. MERS, we did put in $250,000 in there, assuming you want to make extra payment. But we always have now on if you want to increase that, how you want to handle that. Sometimes we do it through the budget process, sometimes we do it through the year, and sometimes we do it at the last meeting of the year. So I think there was some discussion about more information, knowledge about MERS and who's eligible to retire and so forth. So we may want to have a general discussion of that. And I can't remember if it was maybe a couple of years ago, we actually brought in the MERS representative to give the board an overview because it is complicated.
It's a few years.
And it does, yeah, it's been two, three years, but we may want to do that again. The automation fund, there's a module that they're requesting from that budget, which I'm sure Jen can explain to you. Jen Grant, same thing for color document scanner. Sound waste is they're looking, I believe, at cameras at different locations to help with the monitoring of recycling. And so Trudy can give an update there. Little Rock and Water, we just created a new account because they're a separate entity. The board has always funded them anywhere between $3 and I think $6,000 over the years. Their request for this year's $4,989. Amount from last year was $4,500. But now they are now a department of the county, so they're a separate entity. And they have been for this past year, for most of the year anyway. So that's legally a separate entity, which we do have the right to profit because we do have an agreement with them. But their request for this year's almost $5,000.
We have an agreement, not a contract.
Well, we have agreement with that, that our legal council drew up in terms of services because we can't just transfer money. So I don't, it's a legal document that the board approved.
I'm wondering if we should just look at that and just contract with them.
Well, that's basically what we're doing. They're separate entities. They're in a longer part of the planning department.
Right, but do we have language in that agreement that states their performance?
I don't, I just don't remember. It's been a while since.
So, yeah.
But we cannot just, now, we cannot just grant the money. So like, same with the 2%. When the outside agency gets a 2% grant, we have to have an agreement contract with them. I believe it may even be called a contract because outline their duties, no. They provide us listed services they'll provide, and that's what the agreement was for.
No oversight, though?
No.
Yeah.
No.
And this is on top of generally what the work order from Southern Conservation District, that's.
Yeah, that's separate. That's completely separate.
But technically, $10,000 of our money, if you, if you add it up, isn't that five?
No, they're, they're completely separate. The conservation budget is completely separate.
But we fund that, the work order.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
But that's not tied into Little Rock and Water.
I think it is contracted with Little Rock.
Isn't it the conservancy?
No, it's with the conservancy. It's not.
Oh, is it? It's not Little Rock and Water?
No, no, they're separate entities. Could they in the future have some agreements? Yeah, but that's between them.
Okay.
Questions, comments, issues that we just brainstormed on here. One is what you talked about, Ron, about the future of information technology upon Ron's departure. It's not official, but he, as Irving said, he would like to depart by April. That's not cast in stone. I am having dialogue with a unit of government and with a company about forming some partnerships. I don't have numbers. I don't have proposals yet. But I'm hoping to have those here at some point. Obviously, the days of having one person running IT for this county are past. Have been. We entered a partnership with State and that's a couple of years ago. It has worked out well. There's potential we could expand that. I still want a person here every single day of the week for the more routine coverage. But we also are looking at, I won't get into details yet, because we're of speaking with another unit of government about taking over a partnership or coming to partnership with IT services. But once again, we would have a person here. And I think I brought it up, I actually did this when I was in Charlottesville as superintendent. We had a partnership with the Edmond School District where our IT department was run by the Edmond School District, a data staff person on duty every day. So the rest of employees didn't know the difference. However, if that person who was there did not have the skills or was gone or anything, they would send someone else to cover it. Exactly, Grand Travis County has, I think, eight IT people all with different skills. So depending what the issue is, a different person handles it. But I'm not the one who has any firm plans, but we are in dialogue. We have been in dialogue the last couple of months. And I have another meeting scheduled Friday morning to talk about what we can potentially do and have apply a place. So you could more.
Well, when we were at, the state's end people are as well. I mean, does the state have a program?
No, no. They only do because that was a criminal.
Right, right. Through the state.
Yes, unfortunately, they covered all that.
I have budgeted this year, which hasn't been done in over 10 years, the maximum exposure for Ron's budget to all departments. So in the event that he does depart and we go contractual, there will be approximately, I'd say, $80,000 to do so. Because it'd be, you'd be taking off his wage, his fringe, his pension, all those costs, which is the top six of the budget, if you looked at that. Still, I have allocated to each individual department the total cost. Where in the past, I've used fund balance forward to balance in case you do not approve or he doesn't go forward with a capital purchase. He comes to you each year, even though they're budgeted, he comes to you and asks for those. In the past, he, we've had an agreement where we wait, we don't budget fully to all the exposure to the departments. Kind of gives you not a false sense of security, but it's not always, he doesn't always purchase everything. But in this case, I did do the maximum. In the event that there has to be an alignment, there will be enough money to fund that.
And I've done some research, and what I'm thinking about is actually starting to become more and more common in county government. The days of having one person who runs IT are pretty much gone. It's just impossible, one person have all the tactical skills required to handle everything that needs to take place now. And it's more complex year by year with cybersecurity and everything else. So we definitely need to have a long discussion about that, but I need to get some more specific options before we can have that dialogue, but we're working on that. Another transition is my position as the county administrator. I think I've been pretty open. 2022 will be my last year. Need to have a dialogue, what type of skills you want in the county administrator? Because that will have an impact also on how you wish to proceed with human resources and finance also. Because every county's administrator has different background, different skills. There are some that have a background in HR. There are some that have finance background. So you need to have a discussion of what you want because that will, it's linked to the other positions, too. So you need to have a dialogue. And it's good to have now sooner versus later because it does all impact those dialogue. MERS, we talked about, so it's good to have a dialogue, how you wish to handle MERS. We just got our new update from MERS within the last week or so, I think.
It was actually in June, but yes, yeah, just before, just before it goes to audit, yeah.
Okay. And so we can give you an update on that. A big item that we really haven't, we kind of put a band-aid on is the HVAC project here. As you know, we, it's, we chose, I think it's the right decision not to spend, was it, the $3.7 million originally? We did a band-aid approach. It's working. Is it going to work a long time? No. We are just in the process of changing some more heat pumps here. One in the judges area went bad last week. There's a couple of them that are potentially going bad. You did authorize, the first group was 10, and then I think $85,000 second time because we don't know what the cost are, and we're not to that point yet. But I'm sure sometimes, maybe even by the end of this year, we will to that point. So I do have some updated numbers on what the cost will be for the project here. And we can have a dialogue and bring those consultants back in. Maybe some of the, how to proceed with the building projects here. Tower fund, that's basically what Jen just talked about, that if we do build a new tower, how we fund it. We do have some federal funds that could be used for that, so that will impact our budget. How we should proceed with recycling. There's some things Trudy would like to do in that budget, and we can talk about that. Also, cost allocation, and Jen, you want to talk about that? Because I believe we have not cost allocated recycling.
Correct. So when the recycling fell under with the planning director, there was somewhat of an agreement that recycling would pay $15,000 towards the general fund because Trudy's wages come from there. In this year's budget, she reduced that to $10,000. So there was discussion at our Monday meeting that along with, right now, on a cost allocation plan, we use construction code, building safety, the automation fund, the CPL fund, as well as senior services. The cost allocation plan is done by MGT. It's a firm that comes in, takes, we send them their transaction history, basically my whole, our whole audit. And they take and derive how much is treasure, how much is insurance, how much is clerk, accounting, and finance and so forth from those, that cost allocation plan. We take from those special funds and direct that money back to the general fund. If you, as the board, were to choose to do that from recycling, so instead of the 10 that she has proposed to cut back to, if you use the cost allocation plan, you would be directing $17,905 from recycling to the general fund. So that would be an increase to your revenue coming in. But again, that's your decision. So that's why it's there as a comment.
As we're going through the budget request, we noticed the dam authority did not submit anything. And I know they're looking at some projects. So they actually have a special meeting today at 1:00 to discuss that. So at probably our next meeting, we can give an update on what their list is. Because I know there's some safety issues that we're talking about. But we looked at the budget, and I called Jerry and Steve Christensen. I says, we haven't received anything from you. So they did call a special meeting today at 1:00 to talk about that. So we can give an update at our next meeting on what requests, if any, they have and estimate costs with those requests. Building the ground charges, this is more of a tactical thing. MITC, as you know, we can no longer have a coordinator in place on this. He has a legal background. So next month, we'll be requesting that we enter in a partnership with a law firm that is doing it for Grand Travis and Antrim County. Because that's, is it October 1st?
Mm-hmm.
Al Crocker can no longer serve in that capacity because he's not a licensed attorney. So it'll be a partnership with a law firm in Travis, New, that does it for the other two counties. But that will have an impact on building ground charges here. Rebounding of LEC, John or Jen, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I can discuss this portion. If you're okay with that. So when the budget was proposed on Monday, I talked with John and Darcy about, so you rebounded in 2021. So I'm the type of person that looks towards the future in the sense to where to balance 2022. I am using the money that you saved from rebonding this year. Because when we do rebonding, or when we, when we do the bond payment, the general fund supplements that to the LEC fund, and then the treasurer's office makes the payment from there. So it's a general fund transfer right to the bond, and then the treasurer's office pays the bond. With your rebounding, you saved approximately, I believe it's $45,000 from this year's allotment. So instead of moving that money back, we're showing the savings in '21. And by doing so, that means there's less of a transfer in 2022 to make that payment. So you're going to use your cash that's reserved along with a transfer that's less than what actually the bond payment to get, come up with that. And so in the notes, you'll see then in 2023, it will revert back to the full exposure.
All right. We've had some internal dialogue about updating our county website. It's been quite a few years since we've done that. And we'd like to make it more interactive, more user-friendly. And so that's just in the dialogue stages now. I don't have any numbers or costs associated with that. And probably one of the things that we really need to have a long discussion is, is our salary wages. Just like most employers, we're having a tough time filling vacancies. As I listed yesterday, the other counties, Northwest Claire, and many of them are really struggling finding quotas. I think we're hitting them, too. The last couple of postings we've had, we've had, which we know people applying. Our labor contracts do expire this year, so we need to have a discussion about that. We can do an enclosed session to talk about that, which I would recommend some meeting. But it's a challenge everywhere, as you know, in the county, at restaurants, at stores. Everywhere you go, you see how far on assignment, and we're not immune from that. Even though we have great benefit taxes, people tell us benefit taxes do not pay the bills. When we're starting paying, what, $13, $14,000?
$14.85.
That's, you can work at Hangon in Sun's Bay and get $20 plus tips. You can work in a restaurant and get $15. Almost everyone is paying at least $15. So we're not getting applicants for jobs. That's going to get even worse and worse. So we need to have a long discussion of how we're going to go forward. It's a discussion, I think, every county's. It's a discussion I think every county's going to have, based on the list of people who are struggling. A lot of counties have multiple vacancies, they're losing employees in the private sector, I think because of our insurance and benefits. We're not seeing that, but, so we're blessed in that respect. But a lot of counties said in the past three, four months, they have lost a significant portion of their employees in private sector, because we just, you can't compete with them.
There was an article in Record Eagle this morning on that issue.
Oh, was there?
And that most, most restaurants and most unskilled labor force must pay 15 or more to even find somebody.
Yeah. And here, we're only working 30 couple hours a week, some people look at that, at 14 something times 35, where you can work somewhere else for more money at 40, at least 40 hours.
So my grandchildren are working at the IGA for 15.
Yeah, everywhere is basically 15.
And housing is, so, one of the things I feel sad about every time I hear, you know, about it is when our employees can't afford to live here, can't afford to live in our county. So I look forward to being able to do something.
So we're going to take a major discussion on that. On top of that, our labor contracts expire at the moment this year too, so that's going to happen this year.
Did we ever think about expanding the work week from 35 to 40 hours?
Something we can, we have to talk about, yeah. We got to look at all options. All right, and Jen, you want to talk about the last thing about the fund balance? I think you already mentioned that.
Yeah, Michelle mentioned, so like when we come to the meeting on Monday with all of us to come together, this number is derivative from the balance that you need to balance your general fund. So this is the amount that you use towards fund balance. You can, if you want to look at it, your contingency is a savings account, which is 447,000, you could take off of this, and that would be, if you had a maximum exposure of everything, that would be then what you would need to pay your bills.
And once again, I think you all know this is, our estimate for revenues is extremely conservative. At least in the last 10 years, the only year the dubs have spent is the year we did all those big projects with the roof and the projects here, every year, because usually our expenses come in lower than it, revenue comes in higher. And so on paper, it looks like a lot of money, but you're right, of that 400 some thousand is money we always put there as contingency, we don't have a plan for in case we have to spend it. So we already have, it puts down 600,000. If you look at the revenue, I'm confident that we will have a balanced budget.
Not only that, the 1 million is false in line with previous budgets.
Yeah, if you look at previous budget projections, we're pretty much where we are, and we have, all but one year, because of major expenses, have come out in the black. And that year, if it wasn't for the roof, if it wasn't for these projects, we would have been in the black that year also. Michelle West.
One thing I didn't see under issues is, we reviewed Trudy's capital improvement plan last year. That's not in the book. Are there items on that capital improvement plan that we approved that we are attending to or not? Or did we, is that just an exercise?
Well, it's not an exercise, but a lot of things, like in there, I know, I don't have a plan for me, there's this HVAC project here, there's some other things in there. It's a guideline blueprint, but you deal with each item as they come up, whether you want to allocate the funds or not. And you have the right to add things that are not in that capital plan and make it a priority, so you have a lot of flexibility there.
It just seems like, since we approved it, we ought to look at it.
Well, for example, I know the HVAC project, I can't remember what other projects.
My software.
Oh, software's a part of it, okay. So a lot of it is part of this, we will have dialogue. And some of it is things that are down the road two, three, four years, but things that are critical, I'm sure we'll discuss this year. Michelle West.
Jen, I have a question for you. The revenue number that's in the budget book, what are, what revenues do you have plugged into that number?
So.
Other than property taxes?
Okay, so that's, that's John and Darcy's forte on the revenue side.
What's tied to that revenue number? Is it something, is it just property taxes, or?
Yes.
It's just?
General property tax, driving the line added.
So no other income that's generated from services from the county are included in that number?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm assuming on the 4.2 million dollars, we need to have separate dialogue on that, in May, yeah, because there could be some overflow, like the college is a great example. But I'm assuming we're going to have special meetings on that, and make allocations of that, because that is a separate body, and it has to be kept completely separate, and we have to track those dollars separately, so. But sometimes between now and this fall, we will have some special dialogue meetings about how we want to proceed with that 4.2 million dollar.
Well, I think so. Best example is tower fund. You got a lot of money sitting in tower fund, and if we use the rescue plan dollars to, you know, direct the tower, those, those other, those dollars can be used for something else.
So it does give us, even though it doesn't impact the general budget, because of that, if you transfer from here to here, it does impact, it does help. Michelle West.
Yes, thank you. As far as, I had a question on Carol Stocking. Will, is, has courts turned in their budgets yet to us? No. She and I had a discussion yesterday, that in your budget, because it was prepared, I guess it is a couple of topics I could cover. Since you did do your July meeting, and we were able to push this back a little bit, this is the first time you're actually going to see, that was discussed on Monday, six full months of history in this book. Normally, we close in May, and we produce these books. So I think that for your future, I think it looks great if that is, that you could push this to this timeframe, so that June is closed and you have a full six months to look back for. Since that did happen with your July meeting and the staffing of senior services, we did have time, and that was something I had done this weekend, that that is updated to what is proposed and was approved in July. So with Carol was yesterday.
Yeah, I'm not sure all commissioners know, Carol Stocking announced her retirement.
And she is our, yeah, she's our district court administrator, paid for by us and then reimbursed by Tri-County through Grant Travis County and Antrim. So her wages, we did place in here, it also directs to a revenue that I cost allocate on the revenue side for that. Money comes in, so most likely it'll go to contractual, and then that revenue will drop off. So we hope to see some savings, you know, within that district court budget, but I'm not sure, and she's not sure how long it'll take to find a replacement.
And how the courts want to structure that position.
Correct.
We have a vote on whether or not we even replace her, because we gave her an assistant, and, you know, my understanding was, or my intent was, that she would not be replaced when she retired.
Well, it'd be a decision with three counties, it's three counties.
It does sound like, since she retires here, that there is no more agreement, it's a district court and Grant Travis County decision now.
So we're, we're only paying one third of her wages?
Well.
Yeah, yeah, it's like 7%.
How much does?
That's correct. I think our, I think our cut is 7. It's 74%, 19, it's something, trying to think in my brain, something like, it's Antrim and Grant, I think it's Grant Travis is 74%. Do you remember, do you have it off the top of your head? 74, 19, and 7? I'm not sure if that comes to 100.
7, 18, and 11, or it's.
Something like that, yes.
Grant Travis County pays the vast majority.
So we'll see that.
So the only thing we would be saving with her retiring would be just her benefits.
Right. I mean, technically, what's going to happen is, is when they go to replace her, she didn't, she didn't have much information yesterday, since she just announced to me, to them, that how they're going to restructure.
There is a tri-county commission agreement, and I believe Will Bonnick and Elise Mona, you were a part of that. Yeah, I think the chair and the vice chair of each county. But all three counties have to agree on that.
So point of clarification, are we paying her benefits 100%?
No, in essence, when we do the package, it's, it's cost allocated as a package. So all of her wage and benefits, we send that, as well as workers' comp, that is commissioned through all the tri, the tri.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted clarification.
That's correct.
All the costs are cost allocated, all expenses.
According to the percentages that have been.
On caseload.
So the vast majority is Grant Travis, the second is Antrim.
And then I'll.
So that will be coming. Okay, for Parks and Rec, it's going, I think it's going pretty good now. Laurel has a really good handle on what we're doing at Parks and Rec. And I think that we can continue on with Laurel, if she's willing to, to, to do that. One thing I might suggest is, we have the afternoon meeting, so it does pull Laurel away from her work. If Parks and Rec went to an evening meeting, and Laurel were compensated for her time, either with a little bit of an increased wage, or.
Stipend.
Stipend, if we can do that, or something along that line. If she's willing to do that, I think that would take care of our Parks and Recreation, because she understands the process that Parks and Rec just misses in the changeover of.
The current structure is not working for Laurel. She's there, hopefully, to take minutes. She's been trying to get rid of that, find someone to take minutes, we may have found someone, but she has a tough time just taking minutes, because they do not follow, and their intentions are always good, there's no question. So it wouldn't have to be restructured duties, because as of now, Laurel wants to pace herself out, unless there's some restructuring. Because it is very time consuming, and she's not getting compensated, and it's taking duties time away from other duties.
So I guess it's the only committee or commission that I know of that has nobody appointed to them. And I don't understand why that is. And yet, then they're always thrown under the bus that way, saying, while they don't understand, well, how, how can this?
And maybe you have the background, you're just before my time, and one decision was made to have Jerry Coleman be the administrative lead, but that did not work out. Jerry does not have the administrative skills. The board appointed Jerry to be the liaison, but that did not work out, and it's never been, we do since that time, as I understand. You were, I think, a part of that at the time.
Well, I mean, that was, I was, I know a little about that at that time, and I know that's, you know, with, I don't know if Jerry's retired or not, but when we hire a new maintenance person, I mean, that's really should be, I think, part of the maintenance job.
I think they have a little bit of history, I think Melinda could too. So back under David Gill, David was your lead on your Parks and Rec, so he didn't have the human resources side of it, so he, that was more done with the clerk in the accounting department, and Gill oversaw your Parks and Rec. What you didn't have back then was Veronica Valley, until we moved into this building, and, and you purchased Veronica Valley, so then you tripled your size, in essence, of your parks. And then David Gill retired. And when check came on, his contract is more on the human resources guidance of that. So I think that's where your loophole was.
So we should just continue to look at that and, and not blame Parks and Rec, we just have to understand that they're the only ones who haven't been appointed.
They always mean well.
Well, I do think them dividing into three and four meetings a month has created a tremendous problem too.
It, it has solved one problem and created others.
Yes.
I agree. I agree. And we may have to look at that structure, because one specific committee needs all the time.
That really is the heart of the problem.
Right.
Because that means we have to be at every one of those committee meetings, and they do need a very regular business, and it's very time consuming.
Yes, all right. Okay, and then to back up.
If I can speak to Parks and Rec. Why can't this commission, this, the Board of Commissioners reappoint another liaison to that board?
Well, you could, the question's who? Yeah, I mean, yes, yes, that's, although even they themselves realize that there's a challenge.
Maybe when we're making appointments to that board, we should look at somebody that may have some leadership skills that can drive.
But it's just not fair to do, to commission. I suggest, so find, really, contractually, somebody who can administer, that's administration portion, that.
How many people do we appoint to that board?
There is like 12.
Right. And among those people?
Did it change? That would be like taking the county planning commission and saying, okay, there's 12, one of you now will be in charge of following county policy, making sure we're staying under budget, taking all the minutes.
Do you have somebody who is a board chairman?
I think you need an administrative person, a county employee that knows.
It needs to be, ideally, I look at Trudy, and I see how well Trudy does all this, but her plate's pretty full already.
Yeah, that's a challenge.
I see Laurel, but I'm, I'm, that makes it sick, because she's been doing a fabulous job. I don't know if we can change enough to make it work worth her while, or, like you said, stipend should have to make her.
Well, as you know, that was kind of my suggestion, have Laurel be involved and get some compensation for her.
If she doesn't want to, then we, we're back.
I think she may, you know, and we can have a discussion on that, but.
And maybe Duane is. Maybe we should talk to Duane, I think we, we have to explore that, that further. Okay. And then I'm going to back, back up to the, the two independent departments. And, and to move forward with those might change some budgets, so we're probably going to have to create some budgets, or at least one new one. So under our administrator budget, we, we need to look at that and probably have to increase that bud, that budget, because my recommendation would be, and I'm talking to Commissioner Rushden, I, I do agree with that, and she agrees, maybe not to do a comptroller, but to do a, an administrator with financial background. So we get, if we were to bring that person on mid-year, that would give them plenty of time for the smooth transition, and it, and it ends up being perfect timing, and we, we can be allowed a lot of time for that perfect, for that smooth transition. So administrator with financial background, and after we get them on board, we can move, we've already got our accounting department, move our accounting department under the administrator, and that doesn't change the accounting budget at all. Then we could, we need to create a special budget for HR to contract out that person, HR, and try that for a couple of years, with a contractual service totally independent of the county. Try that service, and if we, that's why I'm suggesting a special budget for that department, so that we can track expenses and know where we are. So within a couple of years, we say, boy, we really need to have somebody in-house, we will have an idea of the cost of that. So then we should look at commissioners' special projects budget, and see if we have to, to accomplish those things. Do we need to add anything to next year's budget?
No, she just.
You know, if we create the separate budget for HR, I don't know what, what else we would need to add special budget, but we just need to look at that and make sure.
Michelle.
I would be very, I think we need to consider very carefully the background of any administrator we hire. Our county administrator, I think the most important skill that we need is someone with, with very good people skills. They are administering, what is our staff, 112?
129, isn't it?
Yeah. We issue about 160 W2s with commissions and commissioners and such, but it's about a 127 is what we pay quarterly.
So that's a very large staff, and no staff functions well unless it's well managed. There's a lot of interpersonal negotiation. I think I would be very, very hesitant to hire somebody primarily for the financial skills, because I don't think that will serve the overall county well. I think that's a very, financial skills are very specific skill that are handled by a financial person. There is a left brain, right brain thing that's very, very, very real. So I would really hesitate to have, focus on a finance director.
Michelle West.
Yeah, I, we received a recommendation from the administrator that we haven't even discussed. I'm uncomfortable, uneasy with, Melinda and Deb have talked about what we need and Rob has talked about what we need. We haven't had any conversation collectively about what we need. And I'm sitting here just wondering how we got from a little discussion about Parks and Recreation needing a part-time clerical support to again talking about what we need in the new administrator, how we need an HR director, how we need to contract out for finances or vice versa. Let's not keep talking in individual partnerships about what we need. Let's do it as a responsible Board of Commissioners. It boggles my mind, Melinda, what you just said. It just boggles my mind how we jumped to that. We haven't even given the administrator the courtesy of talking about the proposal that he put forward that was going to address some of the concerns. And we have to stop talking outside of this commission about restructuring this whole county government. We need to do it at the table and I want to be a part of that discussion. And I demand to be a part of that discussion.
So the reason it's here right now is because we are in budget. And we had a meeting, we had a special meeting where we did discuss this. Chat made his presentation, we had discussion and we made a decision to move forward. The decision was to move it forward to budget. Here we are in budget. We've just been an hour now talking about these things. So this is the solution that will get this done in the least cost, best service way.
Use...
So that is, that is the proposal. So that is what, that is what I'm recommending that we see. Let's create those budgets and move forward. It's, the timing is absolutely perfect. Chat wishes to retire. So let's allow for a smooth transition.
Did you want to answer that? I do. We didn't talk about the proposal the administrator put forward. We said we were going to talk about it at budget time. And now we discarded that proposal and we're talking about your proposal that you and Deb created. And that is not the way we do business about county government. We put the issue on the table, we talk about all possibilities and then collectively try to come up with a proposal. But Rob came with a proposal one day, shocked us. You come to a proposal now that you and Deb have created? Why don't we do it right? Let's get the issues on the table. Let's hear from all of us about what we all think and then let's see if we have some consensus and then see if we might have a proposal from all of us.
Will, our, John had his hand up a long time ago. Thank you.
Commissioner Rushden.
Okay, he had his hand up. He's our finance director. He's not...
Are you finished?
Or whatever.
Commissioner Rushden has a floor.
I appreciate your comments, Ty, but we all know that you have conversations with different commissioners, you have conversations with the administrator, you have conversations with the clerk and whoever else there is in this building. How come we're not hearing all the things that you're saying to the clerk or the administrator or the other commissioners? So your comments, in my opinion, are really unfair. I don't doubt that you haven't had conversations with your fellow commissioners on your side of the aisle.
For the record, and I have never talked to anyone in public...
As Melinda pointed out, this has been discussed and every time we try to discuss it, we get the same rhetoric. Melinda and I did do some brainstorming about this issue to see what might be cost-effective for the citizens in the county. We batted ideas back and forth so that we could bring something to this board for further discussion. And you cannot sit there and tell me you have not done that on other issues. So let's quit the rhetoric and get down to business. There's a proposal or a suggestion that's been put on the table for discussion. Let's discuss it. Nothing is written in ink.
And then here's a suggestion. For the record, I have not had any discussion with any of the seven commissioners about specifics of how to replace my job or about the finance or the HR. And that's for the record, I want to state that.
And for the record, what are you telling staff in regards to this issue?
That's going to be discussed at the board level.
No.
I will say once again, I've had no discussion with anyone how to proceed.
This time I talk.
I'm just telling you for the record and I stand on my words. I've had general ideas and thoughts about how to proceed, but I respect the fact that it's up to the seven commissioners. I'm leaving. You need to have a discussion of what you want in administrative position first because that will impact finance, it will impact HR. And you need to have discussion, all of you at the same time. I agree. But I'll once again say, I've had no discussion how the board should go forward. I shared that we need to have dialogue. I'm leaving. I don't have a party in this fight. I'm departing. And all of you need to have a long discussion. I have not had any specific plans with anyone how to proceed. The people have asked for ideas, I share my thoughts, but I do not have a plan in place nor have I shared a plan with seven commissioners or any department head or any elected official.
Mr. Allen.
That's not true.
That is the truth.
No, let me finish. If you remember, we had a meeting, you and Will and I about three weeks ago. And when you came to that meeting, you said we were doing the right thing. Three other counties were doing it. Marion County, Gladwin, Lake County. And what's been going on here, because I hear it throughout this building. You tell us one thing or tell me one thing. Now I hear, I've heard it in the last two weeks, you're telling these people at meetings, Rick is backing off. I've never said I'm backing off. I'm moving forward.
I never said you're backing off. I said we're backing off until we have this dialogue because you need to have dialogue of this position.
No, Chat, you've been riding the fence. And when you ride the fence, you're going to get burned.
I stand on my words.
And that's what's happened. You're telling these people one thing to make them happy. You're telling us one thing to make us happy.
I'm trying to find consensus.
No, you told me, that's true, Monday.
I stand on my words.
No, let me, no.
I stand on my words.
You told me Monday, I'm doing it to keep the fire from going.
That's true.
Well, you're playing, you're riding the fence.
Yes, because it's not my decision.
You're the administrator. You should stay neutral.
Point of order, Mr. Jarrett, could we take a break?
I'm sorry.
Could we take a break?
Well, Commissioner Robbins.
I think, I'm calling a point of order because I think it's out of control.
No, I think I just have it under control. All right. I have a few other things. Did you want to take a break?
I think it would be good to take a five-minute break and cool, using, using the term rhetoric.
It's 10, it's almost 10:30. We usually take a break at this time, so that'd be fine. Take a five-minute break and come back at 10:30. I just, you know. Sorry.
How do you see it? Is there any help for Kim?
We're going to help.
Well, for now. If she ever stays. We're actually leaving. Yeah, they're all coming. I've never been to Curlicue National Park. Here it's beautiful.
Yep, we're good to go.
All right. Are you ready? All right, back in order. Commissioner Allen.
I want to clear something up. Deb and I have talked about this issue. There's been no decisions and no recommendation made from that. I made it very clear, my proposal was my recommendation. So I have no idea if Deb would tweak it. As I said, she wanted a comptroller. She said that at the last meeting. I don't want a comptroller. I just said that. I have no idea if Will's going to take my proposal, make a tweak. Ty's going to make it, make tweak. I don't know. So let me be very clear about that. That was no decisions and no recommendation. Today's recommendation is mine. So I just want to clear that up right now.
Ms. West.
It is true, we all talk outside of this meeting and have conversation. It is a different thing to work outside of this meeting to develop a proposal or a plan and having two or more people meet to try to make, have the Board of Commissioners make a decision. There is a difference. And yes, I agree, we all talk about issues that get moved. We don't talk outside of this room with specific proposals. And that's what I was hearing.
No. As I said, if you listen, it's my recommendation. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad we got that cleared up.
Did you want to say something or not, Chat?
I think it's a moot point at this time. I withdraw.
Sorry.
It's fine.
To get back on topic then, there's questions and issues here. Are there any questions and issues that are not in here that we should, that, yes, Commissioner West?
Yeah, we had talked about this and I think we need to do an in-depth look at overtime department by department. I think that helps us with staff and also budget. And I'd like to request a report from each of, from Jen on each of the departments and on that overtime and maybe a little bit of instruction into how overtime wages are by employee group, how they get comp time or overtime wages or time off or that sort of stuff. So the overtime issue is one. And then I, we've got the staffing levels, but we haven't looked at staffing levels historically. And I'd like to look at staffing levels over time if we might. For example, the recommend, or the request from the records office or the register of deeds office, I'm reminded now we did reduce that, but it would be helpful looking at, have we reduced or have we increased in the past and where are we? So those are the two that I'd like.
Commissioner Allen.
I actually think that's an excellent idea. Thank you for bringing that up, Ty. But what, I'd like to take it a step further is in the overtime department by department have something for us to compare it to. So this year, last year, you know, or last year, a year before, we have to have some comparisons or maybe the last three years, what our overtime looks like. One other question I have is in regards to our temporary clerical staff. Do we still have some applicants?
Very few. We've hired a couple, but we still could use more, yes.
Okay. And so I would like to know how often we have to use that staffing, that extra staffing and how that applies to overtime, you know? Maybe that's diminishing overtime in certain areas.
Just to clarify, when you say overtime, I think what you're saying is hours over the normal hours of work. Like Michelle pointed out.
Correct.
A lot of employees work 35 hours, so between 35 and 40, it's not overtime. It's still, that's what you're looking for.
I think Ty made that clarification.
Yes, just wanted to make sure we're all the same. Because then there's, we could break it down.
Yes.
To hours beyond the normal, and then truly overtime hours because that's a different pay scale, obviously.
Correct. We need to look at all of that. Because if we've got staff that's supposed to be working 35 hours and they're working a 40-hour, it's overtime per se at straight time like they say. So we need to look at all of those numbers so we have a comprehensive picture of exactly what's going on.
Ms. Allen.
John, can I share what you said to me? So John did share what he had his hand up about and it was after I made my statement. And something that he said was that so much of what Chat, an onsite manager with excellent people skills can do, does, is just day-to-day mediation here. I would have deep concerns about having off-site. What is it, Bambi or something? You can pay $99 a month and they'll do your HR for you. Well, what does that mean? It means that they're giving you forms. For people to work together effectively, you need someone here with excellent people skills who can mediate, manage, smooth over, find, see the big picture. So I would have deep concerns about having that be a contracted service.
So it, well, I thought Commissioner Westall had an idea about the capital improvements plan. I do think we should look at that as well, just to see what has been projected, you know, for expenses in the future, you know, whether it's a roof on, you know, a new roof here, just like we've got this out in the front. So I would think that would be another thing that we need to do for issues that we could look at. Ms. Allen.
I don't totally disagree that it might be more effective to have HR onsite. It may work just as well to have HR be contractual and be onsite, whatever amount of time we want them to be onsite. My proposal just says, let's contract with that person and not have them be a county employee, but a contractual employee that comes in. That's a proposal. If we don't like it, we can have that budget page be an, a county employee or create two. Have the two budget pages, one be contractual and one be a county employee and we can look at that, whatever we can get a consensus of today.
Well, right. I mean, I think we could look at what the administrator has proposed. I think we can look at this at the same time, you know? And we can even look at other options and decide which one's the best for the county.
So we have to see those in...
I mean, that should be on the list as, and that's what we're looking at for issues that to discuss. So I would say, you know, the HR, find two or three different proposals and decide which one's best for us.
We probably ought to reach out to legal counsel because there are some limitations on what you are allowed to do with contracted persons. You can't require that they report at a specific time, for example. And we may not want to lose that control. We want to say, we want our HA person at negotiations or we want our finance person at Board of Commissioner meetings. You may not legally require a contracted employee to keep a time schedule.
If we have a contract with them though, that would have to be written in the contract. That would be the expectation.
I think we need legal advice.
But yeah, but that's all now we're looking, just trying to decide what issues we're going to discuss. We're really, this was...
So that's, so that's the issue I want.
Yes.
What are our legal obligations relative to contracting services?
Yes. Commissioner Robbins.
I guess I've been kind of looking at the last few months as far as HR goes. Had a talk with someone this morning on the way up here. To start off, we don't need maybe full-time, you know? Maybe we could go with a part-time, make them county employee and three days a week or something, you know? And we could start off at that level and then work our way up. And that way we do have control. And I do know in the last month of working, talking to a lot of HR people, there's a lot of people out there that would be interested if we created this position.
So would we want that to be like one of our next topics for the next budget meeting is the HR department and what we want to do, how we want to work with that? Because that's what we're trying to do is get the topics for the next one, not have the discussion on it right now. You know, that's, that's what I'm trying, trying to get so that we will move forward on our... on our, our schedule here now and, and complete this for the next, the next meeting, you know. I think we're getting, we're trying to have now the discussions that really are supposed to be for the next meeting. Commissioner Allen.
Thank you for that. I think that's a really excellent point. And also though, that discussion has to be tied into who we're looking for, the skills we're looking for in an administrator.
Correct. So what you're saying, put administrator and HR, you know, and finances would be the next budget session? Is that what you're talking about?
I don't know if it's the next, but they, I think they have to be tied together.
Okay. Well, because it's going to, if we don't do it on the next one, it's going to come up every time. I have a feeling.
Then we do it on.
Commissioner Rush to us.
I was just going to say, the next meeting is when?
The 12th.
The 12th of August. I was just wondering if we would have enough time to get proposals or information on, you know, what HR, contracted HR services would provide. So I think that'll be enough time to get that information.
Commissioner.
And I don't disagree. There needs to be a person in-house. And I do believe we could contract for that type of service, you know, like Ty brought up, negotiations and different things like that. Do we not do that with our veterans right now? They come here?
Yeah, we have a contract with Winter's company.
Right. They come here certain, certain days, certain times, do certain things. So I think we need to explore both, just to see what our options are, what our costs are. And so, yeah, I'd like to look at both.
Commissioner Russell.
I'd really like to start with the proposal that we have from our administrator. I, I think he's taken the time to prepare it. I think we look at that. Then I think we need to identify what problems we're trying to solve and, and see what problems the administrator's proposal doesn't solve and then look at what we need to do to build on that. So I would like to give serious attention to that proposal that was presented to us a month ago.
So put that first on the agenda?
At my preference.
Yes. And then we can put the one that you have proposed as second on the agenda? Commissioner Allen.
So as we, I agree with Ty. We need to find out what problems we're trying to solve. I'd like to make one distinction. An HR person would have people skills. I think what John was referring to is also the ability and the authority to be able to mediate between, for instance, departments. An HR person can't do that. They can handle individual. A person comes and talks to them about a problem they're having with another employee or at home or whatever. That's typically what HR does. HR has no breadth and has no authority, department to department. So we're talking two different, two very important, that's a very important distinction. So I sure would hope that we get an administrator who has people skills above all else. Finance skills are completely different.
Is there something you want to add to the agenda? Is that, you know, because that's what we're trying to get to for next week. You want to talk about the administrator then?
I think we need, I, I would support what Ty said. We need to talk about his proposal. Then we need to analyze what problems we're trying to solve. That's huge. And I wanted to make that distinction because I'm hearing it conflated.
Okay. Commissioner Allen.
All right. So today we're looking at numbers and we're looking at budget. We're not talking about the job description or what we're looking for in these employees. We are looking at the budget. And, and here we are today in our budget. We've had discussion after discussion after discussion about this. And all you keep hammering is that you want to talk about it. We made a decision at our committee at the home meeting to bring this to budget. And here we are at budget. So let's talk about what budgets we are going to create. And, and we, that is my suggestion. So we need to create that budget for HR. Start with that one. And so the HR budget, I would suggest two. One that's contractual and one that's an employee. Now, we're going to need, Chad's going to have to do a little homework on, can you contract that? Who contracts? What it might be, how that can be written, check with legal if you want. How many days would we want? We need to consensus right now with this board. How many days would we want HR in there? Or would we look at the contract and say, we can get it, they'll contract two days a week at this cost and two days a week at this cost, five days a week at whatever cost? We need that in a budget form by August. Okay? The next one is county employee. So how many days would we want if we can go part-time? Do we want to go part-time or you want to go full-time if you're going to be a county employee? I think it can be done part-time. And that was my suggestion at contracting. We can do it part-time. I don't want to put an employee on full-time if this board decides to, but there was a lot of pushback when it was suggested because of the cost and growing government and all kinds of concerns about growing government. That's why I suggested contractual. If you don't want to grow government, let's go contractual. But let's create two budget sun and tell, direct staff, how many days a week do we want that employee? Do we want a part-time employee, 21 hours?
So, so are you suggesting that we, we try to get numbers for contract, part-time and full-time?
Yes.
As far as HR?
We need to have some preliminary budgets on those so we can look at those, what those full budgets would be, because you've got healthcare and benefits, et cetera, if we're going to put them on staff.
And then, and then what the administrator suggested, I think you have a cost in that already?
Well, for the, my.
Yeah, estimate, yes.
But I think we have to decide what we want an HR person to do. It's the biggest question. On the bright side, at least the last 10 years, we've had virtually no HR issues. We had, in this entire building, we had one grievance filed. It was the first year I was here. We've had no other grievances. We've had some grievances next door. We were able to work those out. We have not lost a single grievance. Only one case went to arbitration over a minor issue. We were successful in that. We've had no lawsuits. So I guess the question was, what do you want in HR department? And then are those duties going to be assumed by the next administrator or not? Because you need to have that discussion. Just really, what is this person going to do? What are there going to be duties and responsibilities? Are you taking those duties away from the administrator and creating a complete department? Or do you want the administrator to have those skills and maybe have coordinator or someone that fine tunes it and so forth? Because really, when you look at the last 10 years, we've had no personnel challenges.
A lot of that can be attributed to you.
But I'm saying, that's what you've got to look at. So you've got to decide what you really want in an HR person. It's hard to develop numbers and budgets unless you want, what you want those people to be doing.
Right.
And then, for example, in HR, right now, it's kind of split. I do the majority, but the, but the actual benefit package and so forth is handled by Jen and Michelle and insurance. Do you want that handled by that department or do you want that under HR? Because that makes a big difference. That's a big discussion to have. So I think before you have any numbers, you need to have that discussion first. So I could just maybe next meeting on August 12th, we start off, because this is probably the biggest topic, have a discussion, because they all are linked. The HR, finance, administrator have a big overview and decide what you want, because that will have an impact. Because if not, you're just going to go around in circles.
Correct.
Because they all are linked.
Right. Commissioner Allen.
I figured HR was those HR things. What does an employee go to for? So it's probably, it's, it's probably your insurance, vacations, what did you say? Payroll. Payroll.
Exactly. Those type of questions are handled by the clerk's office. And that impacts.
Because accounting. So it's all, it's all tied in.
But if you take those out, that also impacts.
It lightens the load though.
So it is a big discussion.
Right. It lightens the load. But then we also have, so there's a request for a new employee, so does that, there would be no need for another employee if we lighten that load out of the clerk's office and have...
Well, that's my point. You need to have that discussion.
Guys, we're having a discussion. But if we push it till August, when are we going to see preliminary budgets? It's going to be September. See, that's, that's the issue. In, in September, we're wrapping up budget.
But I know how they can come up with budget numbers not knowing what the request would be. It's a, what comes first, a chicken with egg. We can't do budget numbers unless we know exactly what you want numbers. We can give you numbers of what a full-time employee would cost at a director's levels, which I gave you, based on what the other department had. You have those numbers. But for any other numbers, you really need to have the decision, what you want those duties to do. If you're looking for a full-time HR director, that's one thing. If you're looking for a HR assistant to work with the administrator, that's a different thing.
See, to find the skill set of an administrator with financial and HR is going to be very difficult.
Well, that's what you have to have that, that's what I'm saying. You'd have that dialogue before we come up with.
That's why I think it would be.
I'm not sure how they can move numbers, you know, I just don't know how to do that.
Commissioner Russell.
I think Rick has his hand up too. I thank you for the information on the grievances. So we're not trying to solve a, you know, a resources problem unless, unless some of us know a whole lot different information than, than I know. So we ought to look at all the audit reports and see what all our financial problems are that we're trying to solve. Maybe we bring to this committee, the next time we meet, a list of all of our employee concerns that we're trying to solve relative to human resources and all of the accountants and auditors' suggestions on what we ought to be doing differently. Because I don't think we know what we're trying to do. I, I really don't think, I think we're, we're trying to solve a problem that we haven't defined. And I don't know how we can do the budget without first identifying what it is we're trying to do. And I, I, I wish this were a meeting because I'd make a motion that we drop this whole thing and go back to the budget process. But we can't do that. But we do not know that we have a human resources issue. We know we don't have a finance issue. If, if there are issues that some of us know that some of us don't, let's get them on the table. And we got to get smarter about the problems we're trying to solve. And, and you hinted at some of those, Rick. I don't know what they were. And, and I really don't want to spend all of August talking about solving a problem that hadn't been defined. Let's define what we want in a new administrator. That we got next year to do. Let's define what we, what problems we're trying to solve and then let's put together a budget. We've got all sorts of requests for money here. And it's bigger than just deciding whether Michelle's got too much authority or, or, or we want finances someplace else. And, and unless we chase them away, we've got the current administrator for another year. So let's use him and his expertise to, to solve this problem. That's, so I, if, if we're going to talk about, now I'll be dead on stop. If we're going to talk about this on the, on the 12th of August, let's start by looking at all of the grievances, all of the employee problems and all of the finance problems. And then we, then we can get the problems on the table and have our solution.
Mr. Robbins.
Well, I think we're missing, I agree with you a little bit, Ty. I go back to our meeting in Suttons Bay, three weeks ago. When you left the meeting, you said you were going to have job descriptions. I'm here today, where's the job description?
Tell me what you want those duties to be. I can't create job descriptions.
You said you were going to do it when we left.
I can give you samples, as I told you the other day.
No, you didn't say anything about samples. You said you would draft.
He asked me a question.
No, I'm looking at you, I'm not asking you. Now, and what I'm saying, Chad, is when we left that meeting, you said you were going to draft up job descriptions. Here it is three weeks later, I haven't seen anything. And that's why we're in the predicament we are. If we had job descriptions, we wouldn't be sitting here going back and forth. We'd be knowing, we'd know what we'd be looking for.
I can't do job descriptions unless you tell me what those duties are. I can give you 10 job descriptions in the next hour, but they're general from other counties. As I told you, they, they vary from county to county.
You're right.
I mean, I can do general job descriptions. If you want them, I can give you all of them in an hour, but they're going to be very generic. But we can't do job description until you tell us what you want in those jobs.
I thought we kind of discussed it that day when we left there.
Well, I just want to say, this board voted 7-0 to, to move this to the budget discussion, okay? And, and it, and it decided to put, as far as I know, it was to put it in place and to have it. And if you're going to continually argue about not even discussing to put it into the budget, I'm not understanding where the support. I mean, it was at the beginning of the year, you told me, I was told that if I, once the board decides, we shouldn't resist it. But the, and now that that same person is saying the exact same opposite. He's doing the opposite. This board has voted 7-0 to put it in the budget and all he's doing is resisting it. So I, I just think that, that, that doesn't seem to flow with me, when, when one person tells something, but they don't want to do it themselves. And, and so I, I hope we can move forward and get this in the, into the budget, even if it's at what the administrator said is the full cost. And then if, if we're going to figure out what it is that the description is, then we have got it covered as far as the money. The idea is to figure out, get it into the budget, have it in place, according to what this board voted to do. And then, you know, we've got till whenever we put it in place, but it'll be in the budgets. What I'm hoping will happen. Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Allen, why had her hand up first?
Well, because you were addressing me, I wanted to respond to that, if I may. Could I?
Sure.
All right. We didn't vote 7-0 to implement. We voted 7-0 to not do something in finance committee, not do it outside the budget, but do it during budget. My point is, we've got a proposal from the administrator. That's where we start and identifying the problems is where we start. So I'm not saying something different than I said in the first of the year, but I certainly didn't, there was not a 7-0 vote to implement. There was a 7-0 vote to move it to budget. I'm suggesting that the appropriate way to move it to budget is to take the recommendation that we have from our administrator. And that's where we start, along with identifying the problems. That's not inconsistent with what I said at the beginning of the year.
Commissioner Allen.
I agree, we did not vote to implement. We just voted to discuss it at budget. I heard at no time we voted to implement.
Mr. Law.
Thank you. Surprise, surprise. My motion was to implement. My motion was not to discuss. My motion was to implement at budget.
Guess we need to.
And it might not have been the word, implement in there, but the motion was to move these two positions to budget and that is what passed. So.
Did we take a break? We didn't manage for that meeting?
No, we don't have a minute from those meetings. We've been watching for them. That was my motion, was to bring these two positions to budget and that passed 7-0.
No, it did not.
Yes, it did.
It did not.
The recording, if I may say, the recording indicates exactly what Melinda said. I can give you the timestamp if you would like to listen to it.
So that is why I'm, that's why I brought this today. That motion went 7-0. We're in budget and Will is exactly right. We're just, we're, we're being hammered on asking us to, to bring forward things publicly that don't need to be brought forward publicly. And we do not have to bring forward publicly. We're looking at the best way to structure the future of this county. And so that's what it boils down to. So if, if you want more detail in those job descriptions, we should be discussing what those, what you want those duties and et cetera to be. But financial's easy. If you want to leave some of whatever is done financially through payroll under accounting, then that stays there. It won't be hard to divide those out, but I think Will touched on it. Then just do the, do the budgets for the maximum full amount of those. And I am disappointed that we don't have even draft job descriptions. And I am disappointed that we don't have even draft job descriptions. You know, those aren't hard to do, as you said. They can be fill-in-the-blank, and that could have been done in a short amount of time with the consensus of whether we're going to take MERS or do payroll or do insurance or do whatever. So, it's just going to take a longer meeting in August to get through all of that.
Mr. West.
I'm feeling railroaded. We did not vote seven-zero to implement this budget fund. We voted seven-zero to move it to the budget process. For us to be here right now today and for Deb and Melinda to be confirming and saying, "I got the timestamp on it," it further supports my concern that outside of this commission, we're railroading this through. And it is inappropriate, and it is unethical, and I believe it breaks the open meeting statute.
I didn't have this timestamp. I know what my motion was. Deborah certainly has the timestamp.
Come on.
I'm telling you, we're railroading this, and it is unfair. It is unfair, and we are seven members of a commission, not two and not three and not four.
And not one, Ty.
And not one, and we did not vote to implement this to the...
I'm telling you, I agree with you.
We're going to have to calm down here and stop arguing.
Commissioner Roberts.
Okay. Ty, I will fill you in on what happened that day because I sat in between both of you. Melinda did make that motion. And then, all of a sudden, there's all this discussion back and forth about discussion and all that. And then, there's not a motion made on your side to do discussion. They went back and voted on Melinda's original motion. That's what happened.
Melinda moved...
So, if you want to go back and look at the tape.
Melinda moved to move it to the budget process for discussion.
No, I did not. I never said discussion. That's where it comes from.
Let's not argue about that, all right? It's here. It's in the... We're in the discussion space. Nothing's been implemented. I would like us to try to at least get a... You know, maybe we can get a description the next time, but we can have it in the next, you know, budget discussion, and those are the top subjects. Are there... You know, we need to look at them at other future dates. Because we're not going to settle it here now without some kind of a description, without some kind of a amount that we're going to do.
Commissioner Alwier.
And the problems we're trying to solve. We have to know that.
You do?
We have to in order to...
I don't think you have to.
To make a decision.
I think we know what we're trying to solve.
You have to think of this as a structure.
You just want to state it out in public, is what I'm thinking.
You have to think of the structure for the county. That's what you have to think. Commissioner Alwier. You have to think about what problems there are that you're trying to solve to change the...
We're trying to get off of this subject and move on. That's what I'm trying to do right now.
I agree with that.
You know, and stop talking about HR and administrator and financial and move on to future budget work sessions, all right? We've decided what we're going to... At least some of what we're going to do. Is there anything else?
Yeah, so for the August 12th, our next meeting, I have discussions on the HR, finance, and administrative position.
Correct.
And that could be pretty broad. What other topics do you wish? Because I don't know if you plan on all day, half-day, or a half-day. Probably. I'm assuming. But do you want other people scheduled? Normally, we have started with personnel requests. So, if we continue with that, it'd be the registrar of deeds office and the request.
Senior services.
And the prosecutor's office. And the clerk's office, yeah. Is that what you want on the agenda?
I think we should, yes.
So, I will invite those people to join us.
Is there anything else you want to add?
I do, and thank you for tolerating me. I think we can go into closed session to talk about personnel issues.
Yes and no. There has to be... In general terms, no.
What I'm hearing is, we don't want to talk about the problems we have because we don't want to err our...
We can only go into closed session to talk about personnel. If there's an issue with a specific person, and that person has to request it, it'd be closed session.
Then, we don't have to get into specifics, but I would like to just urge that we have... People with identified concerns about the current structure would be willing to talk about some pieces of their concern. What are we trying to solve? It would make me look at our conversations better if I knew what we were working to accomplish. And so, I agree, we don't need to talk about, "This person said this." But I have done my darndest to look at the auditor's report and the grievance report. And I'm only aware of a couple of issues about staff concerns. So, I want to hear some specifics, not details, but some general specifics about what we're trying to accomplish in spending more money. And it's growing government, whether you've contracted out or you hire them in. It's still growing government. So, why are we growing government? What are we growing government to solve? And I think it's fair to ask that question. And I would like to have that on the table when we meet on the 12th, if I may.
Commissioner Russell.
I have a question for Chad or any of the other department heads that hire and fire. Are we doing exit interviews?
I think each department, yes.
It's up to the elected officials. They can't be dictated to do that. The courts may do them. I do not know. I do my own...
I can tell you that the department heads, yes. I can't speak for the elected officials. Fortunately, we have few people that leave here once they come here. Usually, they retire.
Okay. Any other problem, future... Well, we'd have to look at dates.
So, can I just review, just to make sure we're on the same page? So, August 12th, it's at 9:00 a.m. We'll plan for a lengthy session. And then, we're going to look at personnel issues, who HR, finance, administrator, clerk, registrar of deeds, the prosecutor, senior services, and I may have an update on IT at that point. So, I'll add that to it. Probably just an update, though. I think that covers all the personnel requests.
Commissioner Russell.
If there are any of the requested budget additions that fit the American Recovery Act, I suggest we identify those and take them off of this and move them to that discussion. And only deal with requests that don't qualify for...
The deadline for requests from the public is the 13th. And I think at the August regular meeting, I'm going to give an update where we are. And I think we probably want to have a special meeting just to talk about how we want to proceed with the American Recovery Act. Right now, the only thing that for sure potentially could be that is the tower request. We're not sure about the vote for whether that qualifies or not. It may. It may not. And also, there's still some potential discussion about infrastructure with disability, call for infrastructure upgrades, the HVAC project. Because that's a hefty chunk of money.
Yeah.
So, I think we would have to have a discussion, but let's... We probably want to have a special meeting on just the American Recovery Act funding process.
I thought we were requesting, or the sheriff was requesting, the vote for American Recovery. And if it qualifies under there, it could come off this...
Yeah, I just don't know if it will qualify or not. But deadline for even comments on the guidelines is Friday. So, at some point, they'll issue a final guidelines. But I'm guessing those would be fairly vague and subjective also. But there will be some changes made from the original guidelines that came out just on comment. So, it'd probably be good to have a discussion after we have some more details.
Right. Well, I agree with Commissioner West with that. His request, I thought, wouldn't be in our budget at all, if it's being for under the 4.2 billion.
If it's not eligible, he still wants the board to consider it, though. So, that's why we put it on...
I see.
One or another, he wants a vote.
Yeah. Yeah, we know that.
And this has come up every year for...
Right.
Number five years. Right. I mean, it's a fair statement. He wants both, one way or the other. So, that's why we put it on both.
Okay. And he's not going to apply for the grant again?
That is already passed, and the grant is not on the table. Only the letter request, and I believe the request.
So, yes, there is no potential for external grant funding for the vote outside of the potential for the American Recovery.
So, the next meeting is...
The 12th, and then we usually pick another meeting beyond that. We always try to stay two meetings ahead because I know people's schedule changes. People are busy.
So, are you going to try to schedule that now?
Yeah, yeah.
So, do you want after the budget on the 12th, a full week, 10 days to prepare whatever?
There is no consensus here.
Just tell us, if you find a date, because we have other things we can talk about, too.
Do you have Patricia's schedule?
I do have... Well, as of several weeks ago.
Yeah.
She sent me her schedule through, I think, the month of August.
You want to wait?
But we could at least have a download there.
The issue is, is you're going into the next meeting on a fairly contentious topic that from what I'm hearing, and I've heard it now from at least three commissioners, the backdoor meetings are taking place on. Fine, if that's how you want to conduct your business. But there's lots of things on this list here that are simple that aren't contentious. I just don't want to see us lose time on an issue that's going to take a lot of time and a lot of controversy and not attend to these other things that are on here, like for duplicating, motor pool, where you want this money to come from, additional payments for MERS. I think we have to talk a little bit, I think I said the vehicles, because we need to look at funds, funding for that fund. We've also got the capital building improvements fund. So, what I don't want to see you do is get yourself, we spend so much time on the contentious issue, and then you run out of time and you just go boom, 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 and you don't discuss anything. I mean, they're worthy of discussion. So, I just want you to keep that in mind. I don't want these things to get lost because they're important. They're important to how we operate. So, that's just...
Thank you, Professor. Commissioner Russell.
Madam Clerk, I'm very disappointed in your language about backdoor meetings.
Yes.
Commissioners have discussions on topics.
Absolutely.
Yes. There was no backdoor meeting. There was a discussion between two commissioners about how we can implement what the board voted on in such a way that would be in the best interest of the county financially. So, there was no backdoor meeting.
Did you bring a recommendation for it today?
Pardon me?
You brought a recommendation for it today?
Commissioner Lautner did bring a recommendation today.
And I believe your record will show, based on the discussion that the two of you brainstormed on. It's a very slippery slope.
Is that an open meeting violation when two commissioners discuss an issue and one commissioner comes to the board and he's on those discussions and you bring it forth as a recommendation that has potential voting on?
Yeah, you might want to check that out because I'm going to.
Wonderful.
I've been through it before.
I believe, though, you missed the statement that Commissioner Lautner made right after we came back to session. Because I thought you were...
I heard you misspeaking, but it's on tape, so it's okay.
Commissioner Lautner.
Got it? No, there is misspeaking. As I said, we did talk about it. And as I said, Commissioner Rushin's been talking about a comptroller.
Correct.
I did not suggest a comptroller. My recommendation today was for an administrator that would have the financial duties. So, I agree with Commissioner Rushin. I've been down this road, too, Michelle. Yes, we have. So, I know when not to make a decision and not to make a recommendation outside of board meetings, and that was not. So, we did... It was discussion-based solely on the decision this board made seven-zero to bring these two items into the budget process, period. So, this board had already voted on that.
To bring them into discussion?
To... I would have to go back and listen to the tape exactly, but my motion was, and intent of my motion was, to put them into budget.
I don't believe that's how I wrote it.
It's... Well, I don't know how you wrote it. As I said, I've got to go back and listen to...
The minutes will be prepared for you before the next budget.
Well, no, I will go back and listen to the tape, and the minutes have to reflect what my motion...
We can check that out. We don't need to make that decision.
Exactly. I just want to make it clear. I'm disappointed also, and you got to stop the rhetoric because there was no meetings outside. There was no recommendations decided on outside. So...
All right. We're just trying to find a date here.
I agree, but that was a process of that.
And sometimes, we have met twice a week. Sometimes, we met every other week. Sometimes, every two weeks. So, I mean, we have enough topics to talk about. Even if we have a major issue, we have other topics we can discuss on. So, I guess the best is just try to find a date and...
Look at Monday, the 16th.
Well, could we use the afternoon of the executive session to handle some of these pieces that we need to solve that might not take a long time?
So, that'd be the 10th, because we're all going to be here anyway.
Do we have a special meeting scheduled that day?
There's a... It's a quick one to get a letter of recommendation, I believe. Commissioner Soltz has requested that.
I'm available. It's the afternoon, 10.
Yeah.
I'm not sure with Patricia's. And we never know how long those meetings, our executive meetings, last.
Right.
Well, question of leadership.
Well, so we can set it up for afterwards. Look at it. And I would say that would be a good potential date to start because that actually moves it a little bit forward, and then we would start having...
And do you want to do the more, the less controversial issues on the 10th?
We could try that.
Because I'm saying you're going to have a long day anyway.
Right.
I think you need to focus on this.
Right. We could look at the list that you've put up in the first page of it or something like that.
Yeah. I mean, there's some things in here that are fairly, not, I won't say mundane, but are not controversial that you can deal with on the 10th.
It's on your list.
Yeah. So, do you want to look at this list and tick them out, or you're going to have... Maybe we could have the people come forward who are requesting...
Commissioner...
Yeah.
What about Commissioner Rushin had, I think it was two meetings ago, maybe? We talked about MERS, not money, but MERS, the suffixes, which is open, which is closed, which is Act 88, when they were last adjusted and that type of thing. Because you had asked about that in percent funded because all the different suffixes are a little bit different. And the movement of what's closed groups, not who specifically is drawing, but did you want that overview?
I think... Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
For the 10th?
Can you prepare that?
Yeah. I mean, if you... Why don't I get some ideas from you of what you would like to hear? Not what you'd like to hear, but what topics? Or if anyone else has specifically on our program that we have, then I can hear a little bit more to that and not be shooting so much from the hip.
Right. But I think there was some discussion historically about the different funds and their funding levels.
Yes.
Yes. A little bit more information about, you know, open, closed.
Correct.
You know, just so that we can have a clear understanding of where... We know where we are with our MERS as far as the overall umbrella number.
Yeah, like 84% we're funded.
Right. But where are we with each individual?
With each individual, sure. It's going to vary, depending on if it's the new group, if it's a close. Some are going to be higher because of the few amount of employees.
Correct. Yeah. Thank you for reminding me about that.
Well, it's an interesting discussion to watch because we can also tell you the number of people that are active, that are pending, that maybe have left here and aren't ready to draw, that kind of stuff. We could...
And, you know, with the added retirements that are coming, how that's going to impact if we can generalize that.
How does for suggested agenda on the 10th? Because you never know how long the executive, and you have a special meeting already. And out of fairness to the other people presenting, I think we'd better start, keep them on the 12th, so they know what the plan is, and do those. How about a 10th discussion on MERS, the overtime, the out-of-normal schedule hours review, a review of the capital improvement plan and vehicle request?
That'd be good.
I think that's enough topics.
MERS, capital improvement plan, what was the other one?
Overtime.
Overtime.
And vehicles.
Okay.
And I think between your executive committee, the special meeting, if you talk on these topics, I think there'll be plenty. And then, on the 12th, I suggest, out of fairness to the departments, we start off with the registrar... And I'm not going to give you specific order, but start off with the registrar of deeds, the prosecutor, senior services. I provide an update to IT and then talk about HR, finance, administration, clerk, because that will take them a lot of time. And that way, those people can come in and kind of plan their day.
At the beginning.
I hate to have them just kind of sit all day waiting to be called in.
Does that sound fine or different?
Yeah, I was going to ask you. Yeah, I was, I was going to ask you, I mean, I think the MERS information would be helpful. I don't know that it's critical that we have all of the detail on the different groups to make budget decisions, and some of that, the detail could be moved.
I, I just don't want you to lose it because it was a request.
Well, that's what I thought. It'd be good to have it on the 10th. Because, you know, after those executive meetings, sometimes we're all just drained.
Well, if we have the information, then we can-
Yeah.
-look at it in our private time. And then when we have questions, you know, we can bring it to the next meeting.
You may choose to do more than 250 when you see those numbers.
Right.
So just a little overview. So on the 10th, there'll be a special meeting after the, uh, special committee meeting, budget meeting, after the executive, and after the quick special meeting on the recommendation on MERS, overtime, and by overtime, I mean hours beyond the regular schedule. Uh, the CIP plan and vehicle request. And then on the 12th, we'll do register of deeds, prosecutor, senior services, and then clerk, and then HR, finance, and administrator.
Personnel.
Yeah. Yeah, try to do all the personnel. Because you'll be fresh that day.
Chad, on the dam, you said that they were, um-
They're meeting today at 1:00.
They're meeting. Can we get that information beforehand?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I assume if they have, saying, I'll try to get out to you this week.
Okay, great.
And I don't know what they're going to be requesting, so.
They had, I talked to Steve Christensen on Monday. Um, he presumed that, um, because, you know, we talked how the general fund is supporting the dam. He thought if he gave me the budget that just rolled and didn't make any changes, that I wasn't going to change it, and I was just going to send them $30,000. So I said, that's not how I handle your fund. I took the utilities and added 2,000 extra in contractual, so it's 11,000 in your book. And so that's what they're discussing, if there's any projects. They have actually accidentally overspent the allotment you gave them this year. And I will have to be coming to you for a budget amendment and a fund transfer, because they have gone 4,000 over what you allotted already for this year.
And all the jury has talked to me about something he wants to don, he mentioned some things to John, and we're looking, and said, we don't have anything in the budget here.
So Steve understands he's got to come back, too, during a regular executive session and plead for some more money.
So whenever they decide today, I'll let you know.
Commissioner Wessel.
I'd ask consideration for the meeting on the 12th to be done by two. At least, uh, I have, uh, opportunity to see grandkids for a happy day that day that I haven't seen in a long time. I, I, I would like to not, not go all day. That's just my personal request.
On the 12th?
12. We ought to be able to get our work done from 9:00 to 2:00.
Yeah, I, I don't know. We'll, we'll try to, but I, they can never guarantee.
Well, it's a, it's a pretty important topic.
Yeah.
Uh, but I don't think you want my grandkids in the audience to know this and that all day.
Might make sense.
Maybe they have some advice for it.
Yeah.
So beyond the 12th?
Yeah, that's where we're at. Right. Still trying to get one more day.
So the, the 19th?
I have a board meeting at 12:30 that day.
18th?
The 18th?
I can do the 18th.
18th works for me.
August 18th? What, um, what day of the week?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
And what time?
9:00.
Yeah, I, could you make it 9:30? Or begin time you want.
9:30.
I'll check with Patricia, too.
That would be nice.
So August 19th?
I have something at 8:00.
18th.
I'm sorry, 18th.
At 9:30.
Okay, yeah.
So what time on the 12th?
So on the 12th, 9:00 AM to 2:00. And on the 10th, after the executive committee, right?
10th after executive, 12th, 9:00 to 2:00.
And that, you're going to check with Commissioner Sotis a little to see if she's-
Do you want us, another potential for case that doesn't-
24th work. We'll need another day, the 24th, Tuesday, the 24th.
I've got that one. That works for me.
Yeah, that's, we usually have that airport meeting that day.
What time?
But it's not till-
It's 3:00.
3:00.
So 9:00?
Good.
Case possible morning?
August 24th, you said, right?
How about the 25th?
Go 9:00 to noon?
Yeah.
What about the 25th? And we don't have time constraints.
Or the 23rd?
You can't?
Traffic is pretty challenging getting from-
This is not until 3:00, but we do, oh, you got to get there. So we have 9:00 to noon potentially, right? 9:01.
I mean, it took me an hour yesterday to get there.
Exactly.
So 9:01.
The 23rd is fine. If we can pick a different day, I would prefer that's 23rd over 25th.
Okay.
23rd works for me.
Either day works for me.
That's a Monday? Uh, it's a Monday? Instead of the 24th, they're saying the 23rd?
I might have a conflict on the 23rd. I have to check that one, so 23rd.
Here's the clerk's conference. So, uh, the office may be short-staffed, but we can try and, maybe we'll help out or something.
What about the 25th?
I think your conference is 23rd, 24th, 25th.
We just have one day we have to go.
Yeah, I can't do 25. I've got to sell a parcel.
We have to do an old-fashioned sale.
How about the 26th?
I can't do the 25th.
Well, let's, let's, you know, we can put that down, I, I suppose.
We can pick a day, then we review it on August 10th.
Yeah.
So what day?
We just need to be out of your schedule.
Stuff out to do a sale for.
So what, what day? Well, there, there, she's, Melinda says she can't make it on the 26th.
That's 26th, but-
Well, the 24th, if we, we can be efficient and work 9:00 to noon.
Right. That's what we're saying. But Commissioner Russell said that she'd prefer not to.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, it's not the best day for traveling.
If you skip that week, can you, would it be better to go right into September then?
I don't know.
Or the 30th?
Because you've got 10, 12, and 18.